Good evening, folks. We're going to call to order our special board meeting for the Marin Municipal Water District on the evening of March 14th at 5:00 PM. Can I get a roll call?
Good evening. Sorry. Director Ron G. Kush.
Here.
Director Matt Sampson.
Here.
Director Jed Smith.
Here.
President Monte Schmidt.
Here.
And Director Larry Russell. Not here yet.
Okay, do we have any comments on the closed session? All the comments on closed sessions?
President Schmidt, we have comments at the end of the special meeting on the rate setting process, and we'll have a separate meeting adjournment for the meeting to proceed for the closed session following this. We're going to do the open session special meeting now and then, yeah, sorry.
Okay, then we will begin our special meeting and.
We do have adoption of the agenda on.
Yeah, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Moved.
Second.
Can I roll call?
Director Kush.
Hi.
Director Sampson.
Hi.
Director Smith.
Hi.
President Schmidt.
Hi.
Director Russell.
Hi.
Welcome, really. Okay. Then with that, we get started. You'll be taken away.
Sure, yes, thank you very much, directors. My name is Brett Upandall. I'm the district's finance director. Today, I'm joined by our consultants from Bardo Wells Associates, Eric Helgason and Doug Dove. So I'm going to start sharing my screen to begin the presentation today. Hopefully, you can see that now on your screens. And so, as is indicated on the title, today is a special meeting to go over our rate setting process. And in particular, today is our proposed rate structure for the next rate cycle. And before I get too far in my comments this evening, I just wanted to mention that today really is kind of a critical point in what's been a months-long effort that really began last summer. And so I wanted to take just a moment to think not only our team here with Bardo Wells, but also that the countless staff we've worked with over the last, you know, six to nine months in terms of all the data gathering and analysis we had to do. We'll talk a lot about the details here today, but it really was an eye-opening and an enjoyable experience to get to meet so many talented, intelligent and professional staff members that really had answers to all of our questions as we went through. And I think really reflected well in the final product, as we'll see here today, to have such good information and such a well-run organization behind us. So thank you to staff and thank you again to Bardo Wells here today. So the overview is relatively simple, and we're going to talk again about the rate setting process. And I know that this has been kind of an ongoing process, you know, since December. And so many of these slides are review and/or kind of the summary of decision points we made along the way. And then I'll turn it over to Eric here to go a little bit more in detail on what that means for the actual rate structure and share with you some rate tables. And then we'll talk a little bit about the next steps in the process as we make our way through the spring. Okay, so just kind of an overview slide here. As you can see, our water district is the longest-running municipal water district in the state, founded in 1912, which gives us over 110 years of experience doing this now. As noted, we serve over 190,000 people here in Marin, and that's basically all of Marin except for Nevada and West Marin. And the point there at the bottom, I've made a few times, but I think it's important to note that all of the revenues we receive here at the district, all the rate revenues we receive, they don't turn into profit where we are a special district. All the revenues we receive are applied back into the system, reinvested into the water system, and they all are applied towards future projects. And so I think it's just important to note that as a public agency, we do not make a profit on any of our rates. Okay, so as we go through these areas of the study, I'm going to point out kind of the highlights here. And one of the things that became clear to us from the beginning is that we have five really kind of key challenge areas, as the slide says. But I think as we dug deeper into them, we also realized that within these challenges, each of them have many opportunities to strengthen the organization going forward. Number one is water consumption trends are well below long-term averages. And we'll talk about kind of how that plays into the rate setting process. But I think the key here is that we expect that trend to continue largely throughout the next rate cycle. So we're not expecting any kind of a miracle rebound in our water rate or water consumption. And so that's reflected in the rate structure you'll see today. Secondly, is when you apply that water demand trend as well as our inflationary pressures that result in an ongoing annual baseline budget shortfall of about $20 million. And so again, that's largely driven by our rate structure that we currently have, as well as some inflationary pressures that make up the baseline budget shortfall. The third key challenge that we're seeing is that our water supply enhancement projects, those require additional funding. And again, that's more of an opportunity than a challenge in this case.
Sure.
Just a reminder, I know we've discussed this two or three times, but just a reminder, the ongoing annual baseline budget shortfall has declined from, has gone up from 30 million now to 20. And just can you remind us what?
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to, yeah. And so, you know, as I started to allude to, this has been a month-long, months-long process. And so we've been adapting to data as we've seen it along the way. And we've certainly been adapting the way we kind of present and categorize the data to the board for your decision-making. And so when we first embarked on this, you know, in the fall time, it was looking like a $30 million shortfall. That $30 million was largely water weight rate revenues and also included reserve replenishment as part of the baseline assumption. We would, you know, obviously have to set aside funds to rebuild our reserves. Throughout this last year, what we've seen is a little bit of an increase in water sales. So it's lessened the deficit on that side. It's also lessened the pressure on us to have to dig into our reserves. And so we're using less reserves, we're making more revenue, you know, the last six months or so. And so we've taken, we've applied the revenue, the updated revenue forecast to that and taken out the reserve replenishment from the baseline budget. And so that's what's reduced it from 30 million to 20 million.
Thank you.
Okay, so the third challenge we're seeing, and again, this is more of an opportunity for the, for the district here, is that, you know, to invest in water supply enhancement and reliability projects that will require additional funding. And this is just really a way of saying that the last rate cycle and the last budget that we, that we are dealing with here did not allocate additional funds for any kind of significant projects to enhance or make our water supply more reliable. The fourth one there is more of kind of an endemic problem to the district here. And it's not just confined to the district. It's pretty much every major utility, every major local government in California. But our capital investments are an increasing priority. They're more expensive over time. Our baseline budget now is not sufficient to reduce or to prolong the backlog of deferred maintenance. And so we've been looking at that, and I think we're looking at maybe an opportunity to use bond funding to address some of the more critical needs in the short term, as well as, as you'll see later, to enhance funding over the years to make sure we're not falling farther behind on the infrastructure backlog. And then finally, future uncertainties. And I mentioned this just a second ago in my response about our baseline shortfall. But when it comes to uncertainties to a finance director like myself, that implies your reserves and implies, you know, knowing that we can't account for everything upfront in one budget cycle. And there will be things that happen that we don't know about. Particularly, as noted here, climate change, drought, economic cycles and inflation. So just acknowledging that we don't know exactly what's coming forward to us and that we do need to build reserves and be ready for those so that we can minimize the impact of the district if we do face those uncertainties. Okay, so translated into kind of more of a global picture, kind of more holistic picture about Marin water. And so there's many ways in which we as a district are unique. The top there shows, you know, I think many of us know this, but it's good to repeat it sometimes. We're not a business. We're also not a government in the sense we don't bring in taxes and we don't have a lot of discretionary funds. And we're not a nonprofit organization, so we can't choose our, you know, our primary mission, right? We're bound by our special district charter to provide water to all residents within our service area at the lowest cost and most proportional model. And so, you know, again, highlighting here just the fact that we have unique constraints, unique challenges and unique funding streams, frankly, to be able to accomplish that mission on an annual basis. Within California as well, we're a little bit unique in the sense that statewide, we have Proposition 218 that governs the rate setting process. It's unique to California in general, and Eric will talk more about that in his presentation. And also here, especially in this part of California, climate change, climate change will drive increased risk of wildfire and drought amongst other things. Within Marin County, there's probably even more unique characteristics that we are dealing with in terms of, you know, long-term planning. Number one being our topography. And so many of the things that we come to enjoy here and we actually pay for, for on the good side here in Marin in terms of great views and living so close to the city and living, you know, with half an hour to the coast and half an hour to the city and half an hour to the East Bay, is that we have hills, we have hills and mountains here. The topography that we all live in and play in requires, you know, frankly, more infrastructure to pump the water up and over the hills. Secondly, density, we have a low population density here in Marin compared to other agencies. And so what that basically does is it reduces our economies of scale. We're not a lot, we're not able to spread the costs of our system over as large of a population base as maybe other areas can. And then finally, slow growth is something that Marin has experienced more so than any other county or region here in this part of California. Not only is that a smaller population over time because we're not growing, but we also get less benefit from commercial expansions or large, you know, housing developments where we don't get the connection fees. And so a long way of saying we're kind of on our own, more so to be self-funded for infrastructure. We can't rely as much on developer fees or large expansions to kind of help right the ship. And so again, many of those are challenges from a financial perspective, but also, you know, opportunities and also things that I think we've all come to know and love here in Marin. And then finally, Marin Water is the oldest municipal district in California. We do have our share of deferred maintenance. We do have our own local watershed here, which is unique again, and I'll explain that in a minute or two. And what that just means is that, you know, it's nice to have our own water that we can see in our backyard and our watershed out our window, but it is unique and it comes with its costs and its responsibilities over time. So we have that here at Marin Water. And then unlike many other Bay Area suppliers, we don't rely on the Sierra Nevadas or any water from the state water project. And so again, that puts more responsibility on our community here to be self-reliant and self-fund our operations. Graphically here, just to kind of hone in on the last point that I made about our watershed, you can see 75% of our water here in Marin comes from our, our local watersheds from Mount Tam and from the Nakasi reservoirs, as shown there on the bottom half of your screen. We do get another 25% on average or so from Sonoma County, our neighbors to the north through the Russian River. And so again, that just helps to show that all of our water that we receive here at Marin comes from either within Marin County and/or our neighbors to the north. Contrasting that with most other Bay Area water agencies you can see here that pull the majority of their water either from the Shasta area or Orville, McCollum, Hetch, Hetchy or San Luis. I would say, you know, there's a lot of things you could probably point out on this slide, but what I would say is the economies of scale is obviously at play here with large population centers in the East Bay and up the peninsula, a much larger watershed in terms of water supply, especially up to the north. And also, each of these projects comes with a high degree of either state or federal subsidization over the years. And so in the sense of spreading costs, not only to the communities, but across the state in the taxing power of the government. So again, just to kind of juxtapose the difference, the different situation we face here in Marin than many other water agencies may face. And where that really kind of comes home for us is in this regional infrastructure ratio that we've put together. And so what this does is it compares the amount of infrastructure that we have on the ground on a per capita or in this case, per customer account or per meter account. So when you first look at it here, we're looking at pipes per thousand customers. And this one doesn't really jump off the page necessarily at us. I mean, we are definitely the highest in terms of most amount of pipes required per customer to get the water up and around Marin. But where it really starts to jump out at you is when you look at this one here, which is our tanks, right? And tanks and pumps kind of go together, so I'll show them both here. But essentially, this represents the topography that I mentioned earlier, the up and down over the hills, the pressure zones we have to maintain to maintain an adequate fire flow and just kind of the general development nature of Marin where it requires more infrastructure for any one given meter, one house or one business than any of our neighbors to the north or south or east of us. So again, when I look at this from a finance perspective, again, this just means to me that for every dollar in a rate we pay or in our bill, we're paying a higher percentage of that towards just basic infrastructure under, essentially under the ground that we walk. And then this one here is a challenge in terms of, you know, fixed and variable revenues. And I mentioned this quite a few times, so I won't spend a lot of time on it. But, you know, not unlike other utilities, we have a high degree of fixed expenses and our revenues are about 50/50, you know, 54/46 as it shows here. And this is generally okay as long as things stay in a normal range. And where you start to really kind of, you know, have issues financially speaking is when you have a quick change on the revenue side to where it takes, you can't slow down fixed expenses by the nature of having a fixed expense. And revenues want, you know, if they change drastically, it just gets out of balance pretty quickly. So just a graphical way of showing the disparity between our revenue and expense, you know, makeup here. And then this slide is included just to talk a little bit about why are our expenses fixed, right? And so what I would say to this slide here is that, you know, the services that you see on there in terms of water operations, watershed land management, water system care and improvements, that's basically our capital program, our CIP and future projects and customer service. The one thing all these have in common is that they require a lot of labor, they're labor-intensive work, and they do not change at all with how much water we use, right? Doesn't matter if we're, you know, in a normal year, if we're in a conservation year. These services go on, you know, day in and day out, regardless of the amount of water we pump through the system. With the exception over here, maybe of water treatment and distribution on the top left there, where there's a little bit of marginal savings and chemicals and electricity. Every other, you know, activity you see on this list goes on day in and day out, regardless of how much water is used. And so when you have fixed expenses, I think one of the things you have to really keep an eye on is inflation, right? Because those are out of our control and, you know, we just need to kind of react to them and obviously cut, cast where we can. But this is meant to show that, you know, within the Bay Area, on the far left there, we've seen inflation tick up over the last few years from what is the kind of normal 2%, 3% and 4% to, you know, nearly 7% in the Bay Area, 6.8% as that shows in the orange bar for 2022. Now, that's in and of itself, that would be a challenge. But I think one thing that we like to point out is that, you know, the CPI all items index that's shown on the, on the screen here, that's a bucket of many items that the district does not buy, right? We don't, we don't purchase all items here at the district as the utility that we run. So what we do actually purchase here much more so is fuel and utilities, electricity and construction, right? And so you can see the dramatic difference, not only just last year and the orange bars, how much higher those are than a kind of a normal 3%, 4% or 5% range. But the last two or three years, they've been ticking up as well, right? And so, you know, 2020, 21 and 22, we've seen these inflationary pressures coming our way. And whether or not inflation moderates in the future will be something we have to keep our eyes on. But nonetheless, the base has been built up here and these expenses need to be accounted for, just for kind of our day-to-day operations. And so the last slide I showed was kind of an index on inflation and what that might do kind of in a broad bucket of goods. But we took that one step further and we really looked at, you know, what are some specific costs and how those are rising here at the district? And so you can see some of these items here, we picked them on purpose because there's some of the larger line items we have in the budget. So purchased water increasing 8% to 10%, steel pipe increasing 17% per year. So it's three years in a row, you know, over 50% in total. Water meters nearly doubled. Paving contracts, we've talked about a couple of board meetings in a row here. Those have more than doubled since 2020, largely due to local jurisdiction requirements, insurance, just by doing business here in California with wildfire and litigation risks. Those have, you know, risen over 50% in the last two years. And then water treatment chemicals, again, a 20% increase. So not just on paper, not just in theory, are we seeing double-digit increases? But we're seeing, you know, much more than that in some cases, nearly doubling. And in terms of contracts for paving, more than doubling in the last couple of years.
Brett, the, the, excuse me, rates from Sonoma Water Agency. Recently, there's been some discussion, I believe, on increases in their rates. Are those accounted for in the, your estimates here?
Yeah, they are actually. And so we've had to increase our, you know, assumption for how much the unit cost would be for purchased water. So that reflects the 10% at the higher end of this range here. So they set their rates a year at a time, right? And so we have to set a four-year, you know, rate cycle. So we're expecting 10 in the first year and then a gradual decline in the years after that. But we don't know, frankly, it's kind of an uncertainty in and of itself. Sonoma is in probably a similar situation to we are, and since their costs are rising, you know, they probably are selling less units as well, and they need to invest in their infrastructure. So I don't expect that to be too far off. And if anything, I would probably almost, you know, almost expect for it to be higher than this in a certain sense. But I think, you know, we tried to make a reasonable estimation based on historical trends, plus what we know this year, and we're thinking 10% year one and gradual declines over the next three years.
Brett, thanks. I may be getting, I may be starting to conflate this with water supply enhancement discussions. But, you know, we may be looking at different options for bringing water from Sonoma Water Agency through our existing contract and then through additional contracts, particularly that give us access to winter water. Do we know at this point if the rates are going to differ between those options or?
Well, I think you, kind of what you're getting at is when we talk about yield and efficiency and kind of, you know, cost per acre foot, right? I think that we'll have to keep updating our model to account for what the Sonoma option would be in relation to other models. And I would guess, and I, you know, I'm not an expert in this area, but the other models probably have changing costs too, right? I think we talk about, you know, probably the four or five primary options in the roadmap. We're all going to be having some level of cost change as we refine the roadmap and do the studies. So this is not the only moving target we have. But I think, you know, this one, being the fact that this is kind of the anchor one that we already have most infrastructure in place for, I think we'd want to monitor it closely.
Great, so just something that we have to keep in mind as we're looking at expanding our.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
Well, I think, I think in other words, we don't have any real guidance for additional water supply expenses beyond what we already know, right? So we could get additional water supply from recycling or something else. In the next four years, those aren't baked into our model, right? So I think we're assuming that any of those changes will either take longer than four years or we'll have to just deal with it in the next four years.
Right, I think that's accurate as I understand it, yeah. Okay, so transition here into the rate setting process. And again, these are some review slides from prior presentations. But as the title implies here, why is a rate increase needed, right? That's why we're all here, and that's why we do this study, to determine whether we need a rate increase and of what nature, of what magnitude. So the four key areas are here. Why does, why is a rate increase needed? Number one, to strengthen our water supply reliability in the face of extreme droughts. Number two, to build upon our water and wildfire resiliency efforts on Mountain Tam watershed. Three, to keep pace with the rising cost of operating expenses and to invest in our infrastructure. And then finally, to replenish our reserves that were used during the drought to remain prepared for future events outside of our district's control.
Brett. Speaking of the mic. In this presentation, we talk about strengthen water supply reliability. What we're talking about supplemental supply as well as enhanced conservation.
Yeah, no, that's a really good point. I think there's, there's a lot of ways to enhance the reliability of our own system. And I think leak detection, I think improving our watershed to get higher yields out of there, conservation, as you mentioned, as well as, you know, supplemental water supply are all part of the equation.
I just want to also shine a spotlight a little bit on what we, when we say invest in aging infrastructure. I think it's kind of a term that is a little confusing. And I think it's, it's helpful to point out that we, as we've made, mentioned a number of times, that we are a very old water district and our infrastructure is, needs a lot of, of maintenance, repair and replacement. And that that is part of building our water supply reliability is making sure our system is reliable. And we, and that's part of where our big investment is going to be going into. So I appreciate that is baked in here as well.
Okay, so when, when we go through the rate setting process, and again, Eric will cover more in detail on this, but we are governed by Prop 218 here in California. And so that outlines the process by which all service fees charged by any government in California must go through. The two basic tenants are listed there, rates cannot exceed the cost of providing service. And so, you know, looking at that backwards, we have to decide what the cost of our service is and then make the rates accordingly. And then when we make the rate structure, we have to make sure that our cost recovery, which is the rate design, is proportional to our customer base. And so those are the two overriding substantive requirements of 218. As we, you know, kind of divide that out and we go through the process, we break it up into the cost of service analysis, which what we're talking about today on the left-hand side. And then we also make sure we do above and beyond what's needed in terms of public outreach and engagement. And you can see there on the right-hand side, the outreach and engagement piece. Only two of those items are required by Prop 218. But we do, again, above and beyond all the other activities there, just to make sure that as we're going through the process, we're being as transparent as possible. And that we have a documented process for decision-making. And then we really do try to meet our customers wherever they may be, whether it's online, in-person, board meetings, customer workshops, whatever it may be. So those are, those are the key pieces of this. And I'll let Eric talk about the cost of service analysis in his presentation in terms of the detail there. In terms of our process recap, I mentioned we've been working on this for months and this just starts in December. But I guess, you know, staff has been working on this since the fall. But really, really in December, as we brought it to the board, we began with kind of overview and background, the water rate study and capital improvement program. We really dove in deep in January into revenue requirement, rate design, capital investments, the backlog, as mentioned by President Schmidt, there in reserve targets. We spent a lot of time in February on customer workshops and honing in our drought rates and finalizing the revenue requirement a few weeks ago. And now here we are in March, proposed rate structure. We'll schedule a public hearing and we'll mail out the proposition 218 notices. And I think anytime we talk about adjusting rates or increasing rates in the districts, we want to make sure we remind, you know, the public that we have discount programs available for our customers to make sure we're keeping an eye on affordability. And these didn't begin this year. The district has a very long and great history of having a very robust and generous discount program. We go above and beyond what's, what's done in terms of our local comparators, particularly the one in the middle you see there for a waiver program based on income. Our current program serves over 1,000 customers and it weighs all of their fixed fees from qualifying customers' bills. It also, I would say that the program requirements are much higher in the sense that the more people qualify. So it's a higher income threshold. And then the actual benefit that our customers get from this is about double what's typically seen in other areas of the Bay Area. So I think we're really proud of this and think we want to continue to highlight the fact that this is a program available to those who qualify. And then we're always kind of keeping an eye on affordability whenever we go through this discussion on rate pairs, on rates, on rates, on water rates. Okay, and so this next piece here is our cost of service analysis. And this is really a key step, as highlighted by the arrow there at the bottom. But, you know, the overall cost of service is listed through the boxes on the top. But the revenue requirement is really that key step, as I mentioned, to determine our funding priorities. And so we spent a long, a lot of time on this in the last month, really honing in on what, what level of revenue are we going to acquire so that we can not only, you know, fix the baseline budget operating deficit, but really begin to move forward and invest in areas that are of top priorities to the board. And so I'm going to highlight that a little bit here in my next few slides. And then, as I mentioned, Eric will talk more about the rate design. But when we talk about revenue requirement, as I just sort of alluded to, there's two key pieces. The first one, the baseline budget at the top, how do we just get funding back for our existing service levels and our capital improvement plan? We've talked about the $20 million shortfall we're currently facing. In the short term here, we've used temporary cost reduction strategies and use of reserves to kind of plug the gap, but that can only be, you know, as implied, they're temporary. And so we need a more structural, ongoing fix. And then, as is mentioned also, in terms of our aging infrastructure, our baseline budget of $20 million is a good step in the right direction, but it's not enough to, to keep a cap on the, on the backlog and certainly not enough to make any progress. So as the bullet shows there, the $20 million current baseline budget actually still creates a growing backlog of deferred maintenance at that $20 million level. And then the second category is where do we see opportunities to strengthen the organization? And so it's a bigger list there certainly, but water supply enhancements being at the top. Large system critical unfunded capital projects is another piece. And then that kind of just speaks to the fact that we have some very critical pieces of infrastructure that are at the end of their life and they would cost more than one, one whole year of CIP. They're higher than $20 million essentially. So we couldn't fund them with cash if we, you know, without sacrificing everything else in our capital program. And so we have a chance to use some debt service for some of those larger unfunded projects. And then to kind of continue, start working towards, you know, not falling farther behind. We also have an opportunity to start investing more money into our deferred maintenance backlog. You know, and from a needs assessment perspective, we've took, taken a look at the organization and found some targeted areas where service level enhancements may be most appropriate. Finally, I've mentioned reserves a few times. We do need to make sure we're doing our best to refill and replenish our reserves to prepare, be prepared for the next water cycle and/or economic cycle. And then we've also talked briefly in the last meeting about we have two key pieces of technology that one is at the end of its life or SAP system and one we would like to expand in terms of AMI, so critical technology replacement projects and expansion projects would be the last category under our strength in the organization header there. And so when you break that down in dollars, this was a slide we had in the last finance committee meeting. You break it into dollars, our baseline alone is shown there. The rate revenue we're currently bringing in and expect to bring in under the current structure, if we had no rate increases and then our expenditures are based on expenditures. As you can see, there already a mismatch in fiscal '24 of 20.7 million. And then basically, you can see our, the inflationary pressures driving the expenses up while revenues remain mostly flat. And so the bottom line is the operating loss in this case grows over time. And so each year throughout the four-year rate cycle, we'd fall farther behind. And then kind of implicit in that is we're using reserves now. They've been utilized in the past and we'll need to not only stop the bleeding in a certain sense here, but also begin to replenish those reserves by at least two and a half million a year, if not more.
Brett, can you remind us, if we stick with the baseline budget as illustrated, at what point will the reserves be fully depleted? Brett, can you remind us, if we stick with the baseline budget as illustrated, at what point will the reserves be fully depleted?
Yeah, so right now, we're projecting to end the year with unrestricted reserves, just about $24 million at the end of this year. And so if you kind of do the quick math there, we could make it through one more year, but then we'd be down to our last couple of million dollars by fiscal 25.
And these, these are the unrestricted reserves. Of course, we have other reserve funds, but those are restricted.
We do have other funds, but they're either legally restricted by bond covenant or they're, you know, essentially required to be maintained against our credit rating or for litigation expenses. So you can't really dip into those.
And Brett, just to be clear, the the increasing cost and expenditures, that is, that is solely inflationary increases?
Yeah, that's right. In this look, it's about five to six million dollars inflationary increases. A lot of it's, you know, kind of driven by the four to 5% overall inflationary environment as well as the costs outside of our controls. This is just basic service levels moving forward. If you apply inflation to them, five to six million a year.
That's important. Thank you.
Okay, so the next step we took at the last finance meeting was, and across the top there, you see the find that the baseline operating shortfall still remains. And then we took a look at, you know, what, what, you know, again, from a needs assessment perspective, what can we do to strengthen the organization? And so water supply, infrastructure, deferred capital, service level enhancements and reserves and IT systems. Those were briefly mentioned in my last slide. We took more time on them a week ago. But if you add all those up as the point of the slide, you add all those needs up that we have. And you look at the bottom and we look to some pretty significant revenue needs, talking about $70 million being needed in the first year, up to $92 million. This is all in addition, you know, to our current revenues. And so I think that was when we looked at it and said, well, this, you know, we obviously can't take on this much in terms of capacity right now. And this would be a big jump to be able to fund everything in year one. And so we had a lot of discussion again, two weeks ago on how to best kind of attack these needs while balancing the capacity of the organization and the overall impact rate payers. And so the result of our discussions a few weeks ago was basically this, was to kind of whittle down that list to what is the most important, what has the biggest bang for the buck? And what we can get done immediately. And so I've grouped them into the three categories here, water supply, resiliency enhancements at the top. Many of these, actually, each of them come from the water supply planning roadmap. And so over the four year period, these would be the dollars we'd allocate towards these. And it starts with electrifying the Sulehulu reservoir to make that a permanent facility that we can draw water from. Connecting Phoenix Lake and Bon Tempe together, again, to make that more of a permanent connection that we can rely on each and every year. Continued implementation of the roadmap and pre design costs as we get down, down, down the road on investigating future water supplies. A 10 million, 10.9 million over the four year period. Our conservation program that we currently have, continuing that basically to the tune of 1.7 million per year. So it gets you a four year total of $6.8 million. And then setting aside funds, two and a half million per year totaling $10 million for a future water supply project reserve was included. And then holding aside also funds to be able to pump in water from Sonoma, purchase water from Sonoma as needed each year in addition to the baseline. And so those make up the water supply enhancement category.
Yeah, Brett, just a quick question. Are you looking for our approval of these exact numbers that you're presenting here tonight or an overall rate structure approval? So as an example, I think we went into detail on electrification of Sulehuli and some level of the conservation program, et cetera. But we also asked for more detail on other items. So specifically on conservation, I'm still looking for what items are not on there, like what is Sonoma doing that we're not doing? And let's look at us mapped next to Sonoma in terms of investments and ideas. And so that we can have a good, healthy discussion about what we're not including in the in the budget. Similar on the water supply project reserve and and looking forward to pre design and some of the details of that implementation. And I don't think we've seen a lot of that yet, right? So this is just high level. It's hard to approve an exact number without knowing what's behind it.
Yep.
So tonight is not an approval. The actual approval of the rates would occur at the rate hearing in May. So tonight, what we're looking for is acknowledgement that we're at a point where we can send out the 218 mailer. So that's really what tonight's about.
So if we want to increase conservation by double, that's still okay?
Well, anything's okay, but that would be a pretty significant, I imagine, delay in this whole process. So I I think maybe a brief discussion on that to, so the board can fully understand where we are and how we're handling conservation. The the number there is the portion of the conservation activities that are calculated to reduce demand. So this is just a portion of the conservation program. And to develop that, we looked for every single drop that we felt relatively confident and counting in terms of savings with our experience, with the industry experience and with case models around the country. In addition, we have our base conservation program that through mass, a master plan update, we're going to be looking at exactly what you were saying. Is there anything else that anyone is doing, even if it's not activities where we'd have confidence that the, we would see the reductions in context of water supply planning, but what's out there, what's innovative? So we plan to do that and we plan to move forward. I don't believe it's a significant revenue budgeting issue. I think most of what we'll be talking about is the comfort of the board of enacting additional regulations and policies that drive conservation. So I think that I don't think it's going to be as much of a budgeting discussion, more of a policy. And how do we want to be seen and are we comfortable moving forward banning nonfunctional turf, that sort of stuff?
Did you say we had, you looked at detailed models about these different conservation efforts and how much water they would reduce? In in each of these, I don't know if I've seen that. I'd love to see that.
Yeah, so what we had.
Or was it, was it sent around, like how much water we could save with each of the different investment areas?
Each incentive program, we we showed the board a few times what the expected uptake of our customers would be and how that translates to savings over the planning period of the water supply assessment.
And did we look at other options? Do we look at things that we decided not to do? I think I've only seen the list of like, we're doing this, but not like what's Sonoma, I know is investing a lot more in turf replacement in other areas than we are.
Yeah, I I don't know they're investing more, maybe a bit differently. We did look and we brought in two national experts to look at what we developed to confirm that we weren't missing anything.
Is that Medows?
Well, it was, Medows was the second one. The first one was Peter. I forget his name.
It was Peter Meyer.
Yeah, thank you.
I think in talking with Medals, I think almost they validated my question. They they were wanting a lot more detail also.
But you know, what's interesting though, Jed, is I remember watching their presentation. And they actually made some recommendations to cut back on things that we were currently doing. And in the end, I think there was a decision not to follow some of that.
Right.
And the number one, I I think I am on to.
Now you are.
Yeah, sorry. But the number one activity that they recommended was the AMI implementation, which you'll see is a separate line item here. So.
AMI and water loss. And so on both of those, we are moving ahead. AMI, as you know, and water loss, we're looking at bringing on a water loss expert to look at our program.
And then what about on on just the roadmap implementation and pre design details, I guess, yeah.
The non conservation. Yeah, so we have a little over $3 million a year to do studies. So it's the 10.9 million you're referencing. Right? So the board asked for details on that. And next Tuesday night, we're going to be bringing back, to the extent we can at this point, what the breakdown looks like on the different elements of the roadmap. How the spending would likely, at least in this initial analysis, roll out and over what time period?
Right, sorry, it's one more element. But but so so the 3.1, how does that relate to the 10.9 here?
That's a good question. I thought it was 3.1 in my off. Oh, because the first year.
Exactly. It's 3.3.1 in the years two, three and four, but we scaled that back in year one.
Right, just in the reason we did that is it takes time to gear up, to bring the teams on and gear up. And we didn't want to overreach and impact the budget.
So if we think that should be higher or lower, are we losing that flexibility by supporting this tonight?
Losing.
Are you asking us to approve 10.9 for roadmap implementation and pre design? Give or take 5% or 20% or 100%? I mean, are we making that decision right now before we've seen the details?
Well, what we we'd be making the decision to send out the 218 mailer understanding that we're probably three months away from having clarity and details, because where that's going to come from are the experts themselves who will develop the scope and the details of the costs. So we won't have that level of detail even next week, exactly and precisely how that money is going to be spent. I think the, a question is, does staff believe we have sufficient money in the budget to do what we're saying we're going to do? And the answer is yes to that. Including implementation on of the roadmap, the no regret items, the saving money for future bonding studies that we just talked about, as well as the stream enhancements monitoring that we've talked about as well. So the the answer is we do have funding in this proposed budget and these proposed rates to meet what we're saying we're going to do for water supply.
So just to jump on this, I mean, I think I can see the tension here, which is that if we, if we had all this, the information that we will garner in the next six months, that might change what we might be opting to do right here now today. If we want to make sure that money is not that we have sufficient funds to carry forward this really important water supply resiliency investigation, so that that is not a pacing item for for moving these projects forward. A question I would have is if we adopt, and I believe that the the staff have done a very good job at at looking at the amount of funding we would need in order to continue to pursue these. And we do look forward to seeing that detail, but I'm going to, I believe that the staff has done a good job at looking at that. But let's, but you know, nobody's perfect. What would happen if we would get six months down the line? And and it turns out that we really needed another, you know, million dollars a year in in year two, three and four in order to not have that become a pacing item.
It's a great question. And when we look and you'll see later on, our capital program will be approximately 50 million a year, including these issues. So we would delay a capital project and take that money to address this priority effort. So this is going to happen, I believe the monies are dedicated, but if it's slightly off, we'll definitely, it's not going to stop the work.
You know, I think, you know, we've been, we've been wrestling with the tension, Monty, that you just noted and Jed, that you're bringing up between trying to design a budget from a bottom up where we first understand what all the cost requirements are and then build the budget versus top down where we establish some target numbers and try to make everything fit within those. You know, we've been going back and forth on that. It's, it's, it's really tough. One question then, Brett, is how much flexibility do we have down the road if we decide that, you know, we need, we'll need additional funding for the implementation and pre design of the roadmap? And we're not spending as much as we had anticipated on, for example, maximizing Sonoma water. Can, do we have abilities to shift between these?
Yeah, and that's a really good question. And I think, you know, a lot of this kind of take us back to what I mentioned at the beginning is there's some unique characteristics to being a utility that are not like a government and all like a business, right? And so we're kind of stuck in the middle and that's the tension we're talking about here. I would point out that the rate cycle goes for four years, that we'll have two budget cycles in between that. And we always, you know, to the the board always has the authority to reallocate funds, as Ben mentioned, from one area to another, right? Once, once we're within the mid budget cycle, we also do have some reserves, we relied on the reserves, but we will have some reserves there to supplement. But I would agree with Ben that our most of our flexibility comes under the overall capital header, right? I mean, I think within the capital program, we have our baseline budget of 20. We'll be adding additional funds here for specific purposes, but those essentially all flow through the model as, you know, overall revenue to the district under the capital side of the house. And the board would have that option to reallocate, you know, as needed, you know, in the next budget cycle, even in the, you know, in mid cycle after we set the budget. So this is not tying our hands by any way. This just gives us an overall revenue stream to begin that process of, you know, really allocating the line items. And so it is awkward in the sense that we're kind of, you know, a little cart before the horse in some senses, but it really is just a part of the the revenue requirement, cost of service. And then the budget comes after that. And I think ultimately, you know, you can always do another rate study in 218. If we really decide, hey, we want to accelerate this and move forward, a year or two from now, we can do another cost of service study and do another public hearing and process just like this and say, we'd like to add X amount more because now we really want to do this. And so the board has ultimate flexibility in the end, there's just process that goes with it in between, but you're not tying your hands by any means at this point.
I think that's really helpful and you know, and I think that, Ron G, your point on maximizing Sonoma water supplies. If we were so lucky to have three wet years, we might not acquire that water because we wouldn't need it. It would be a more, far more cost effective thing to, or to purchase a much smaller amount than than the budget allows for. I just want to clarify on the conservation program, are these additional funds above and beyond what we currently invest in our conservation program? So these are, these aren't, this isn't the conservation program. This is in addition to what we currently are spending.
So so this was added just to highlight the fact that water supply includes conservation. That 6.8 that you see is already embedded in the baseline. So it's 1.7 a year times four years. So this is not new money. This is, you know, just in light of the conversations and the kind of the quick piece we've had in the last couple of weeks. I wanted to make sure that when we talk about water supply, resiliency, conservation is a part of that. And so I probably should have put an asterisk here to say that that piece of it does not require new funding that's already incorporated in the current baseline.
Okay, that's helpful. I I think that, you know, as has already been mentioned, we're going to be doing a deeper dive, a look at conservation in the coming months. And knowing that we've got some flexibility to, if there are our cost effective measures that we can pursue and accelerate, that we have some flexibility to to move those forward.
It may be a clarifying point. So we are not approving these dollar amounts. We're approving a high level budget. And then we can possibly shift that conservation number up or down or any of these. Is that correct? Like, as an example, I don't think I've seen, or maybe I have the details behind the maximize Sonoma water, 9.6 million dollar line item. Have we seen that?
So so with that line item is that's just basically saying about 2,000 acre feet per year. Again, given we don't know the unit price, exactly what it's going to be, but about 2,000 acre feet per year over four years. And that's.
That's just the the acre, that's the variable cost of buying the water, but not the infrastructure investment.
No, that's just purely if we want to pump in more water over the next four years and really maximize, you know, within our current contract, that's the money there.
So we can, we can decide in the future, I think is what I'm hearing. Thank you, Ron G, for asking. We can shift these numbers in different directions going forward. And we have flexibility to do that. And so it's almost like, I want to see more detail, but it's almost like, okay, if we can't see more detail, then we want to be able to have a super high level, top down approach and then have flexibility.
Can I just jump in real quick? It's much like, I think, the the capital improvement projects, right? We're approving two placeholders, not two projects, the same thing with all of these two. Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's very, that's a very good way of summarizing it, Director Simpson. And I would just, you know, just one little caution on there is that I think within general categories, I think we're fine. I think for cost of service and for cost justification, which is the real goal of this, we just need to make sure they're in the kind of the right allocation, you know, lanes, for lack of a better word, and where they were, they're hitting the rate cycle. But as long as we're speaking broadly and the kind of the operating versus, you know, capital, I think we're in a pretty safe space to be able to say we have flexibility. Thanks. Okay, so the second category is capital infrastructure and IT. And I think the one on the top there is one that we spent some more time last week talking about what's the right pace there, because it's obviously a big line item, right? $30 million. I would say that if you recall, the conversation we had is that the backlog is so large, it would be such a big jump to to go right into it that we were going to scale up funding towards that. So the math there is 3 million in the first year, followed by six, then by nine, then by 12, so kind of scaling up as we have capacity. And as we identify the most cost effective and best bang for our buck. in terms of reducing the backlog or at least stabilizing the backlog of deferred maintenance. Debt service, again, critical system, critical projects. And we had a discussion on this of which of the top three or four projects are, are we really going to kind of apply these funds towards? And I think, again, there's flexibility there. We, we decided to program this for beginning in year three. Obviously, the interest rate market is not great right now for going out for, for bond funding. And so I think we would, you know, hope, selfishly hope that that gets better in two years. And also we'll have the capacity and we'll have more time to really kind of look at the engineering studies to find out where to best spend those funds. And then finally SAP and AMI. And I think there's a good, good discussion on kind of timing and pace and a relative priority there. And so I think, you know, the two of those combined, again, could probably be flexible within those. I think we know we need to, you know, start first on SAP, but I think we could probably start talking about, you know, how we work on those together in tandem at some point along the four-year cycle. So again, it's more of a placeholder for those two systems that we know we need to address over the next four years.
Brett, I just want to jump on that point because on the 28th, we did get into that, you know, as you're referring to that, you know, being, being hyper aware of strategies for accelerating our uptake of AMI, possibly including options that don't rely on a full SAP upgrade. Yes. So.
We are going to be bringing that to the board in upcoming meeting, looking at AMI, SAP, Flume, and just looking at that world and what are possibilities, what are linkages, kind of different approaches?
And the final category, service enhancements, again, this is kind of based on a highest needs in the organization and needs assessment. But I think number one on there is really increasing our, our local contributions to our BIFIT program, which is our watershed fire fuel reduction and mitigation program at the watershed, adding a ranger training position, adding a, a position within HR for district-wide organizational training and development leadership. And then also bringing back the valve exercising crew that was cut a few years ago to make sure that we are able to safely and effectively conduct our repairs at any point in the system. So those are the service level enhancements that are baked into the, to, to the revenue requirement here.
And I just wanted, just to help make sure that we're seeing the things in the right way. The, that for the watershed fuel, fire fuel mitigation, that's a $2 million increase over our current.
Exactly. That is an increase in our current spending. It's 500,000 per year. So over the four years, 2 million to increase as opposed to our current. Okay. And then so that was revenue requirement. Again, it was quick, but I think we spent a lot of time on that in last month. And then the next piece is our rate structure. So how do we allocate these costs amongst our customer bases? And so we really spent a lot of time kind of looking into the, the best strategy here and best practices and what we can do from a cost justification standpoint. And really to reflect the, the, the significant change in demand patterns that we've seen in the last two years. So number one, update the rate model to reflect our current demands and our, and our rising cost of service. So a piece, a part of that is adjusting and frankly, reducing the residential tier breaks to better align with kind of the, the distribution curve that we see and the costs associated. We wanted to evaluate fixed fees and essentially reduce fixed fees as a percentage of our, our customer bills. And so you'll see that's coming through as well, where fixed fees are being reduced for, you know, about 90% of our, our customers. We want, and then by, by definition, if we're reducing fixed fees, that the enhanced funding opportunities, we talk about the strengthening the organization and the other enhanced revenues, those would be applied to the volumetric side. And so we'll be using the volumetric side of the, of the rate structure for enhanced funding. We also wanted to simplify our rate structure, right? We had a pretty complicated rate, rate, you know, sheet or rate card there. So the, the goal is there is to improve our customer understanding, to give customers more control over their monthly bill, to encourage conservation as a part of the rate structure. And then to eliminate the seasonal tiers as well. And that's simplifies it as well. It also updates our rate model to be more cost, you know, cost conscious or kind of cost reflective. So taking the, the seasonal tiers away for residential, residential customers. And then finally applying a long-term lens. The idea there is, you know, although there's some significant changes in this year's proposed model, we really did try to take an incremental approach where available, where possible. So when we came to the decision points of do we, you know, go as far as we can or, you know, do what everyone else does? We, we chose the path of no, we'll go incremental here to minimize the disruption and the change for customers. And also to make sure we're really taking kind of calculated steps and thoughtful process along the way. The long-term goal is to have stable and predictable rate increases for customers. And we've talked about the rate history here at the district and how I think it'd be all of our goals, both from a district management side and financial planning side, but also as a customer that I am, on the customer side, we want to make sure we're giving them predictability in their, in their bills from year to year, not having big swings. And then part of that is incorporating drought rates. And so drought rates, you know, kind of help keep the pace, you know, in the middle of the rate cycle. When maybe you don't have time to go through and adjust every part of your rates and you're, you're faced with, you know, a drought as, as, as it implies, that helps us keep our revenue stable and helps keep, you know, the long-term stability of our, our rate cycle intact. And so those are the three kind of overriding themes and goals as we went into the rate structure. And then for that, I'm going to turn it over here to Eric from Bartle Wells, and he'll give you a little bit more detail on our, on our process.
All right. Thank you, Brett. Yeah. So I'm going to go over things in the context of our, how we approached building the rates. So you'll see some things that are similar, but maybe slightly different. And just kind of touch on some of the things that Brett touched on already, but from that context. So I'm going to talk about the overview of the finances that we are looking at, the objectives of the rates, touch on the rate study process, go through how we incorporated that financial plan, talk about our proposed rate structure modifications and then show the proposed rates. And then turn it back to Brett to discuss next steps and open it up for discussion. As Brett said, rates are how you receive revenues. They're 95% of your revenue source. So, you know, how the overall revenue that you're getting from rates really affects what you can do. And so what we're talking about today is basically growing the, the size of the pie that you have to, to slice up. Rates need to be set at the levels adequate to fund the, to fund your, the cost of providing service. And that includes all the capital things we talked about and the operating costs. You're facing a few challenges that Brett highlighted. You know, and, and opportunities to invest in the district to make sure that the rates can, can continue to fund operations and not falling behind, further behind the, the inflation. And, and just continue to enhance the, the infrastructure for district. So the overall objectives of the study, make sure the rates are financially sufficient to bring in the revenue that's identified as the necessary revenue requirement, compile with Prop 218, align with the district's objectives of encouraging conservation, making sure that low user affordability is, is taken into consideration. And, you know, having a customer focus on, on really building, continuing to invest and build a, a, a strong water system for the future. A little bit more about 218, the key substantive requirements of 218 are that rates cannot exceed the cost of providing service and that the rates have to be proportional to the benefit provided. So the rates you'll see, we designed them to account for the different incremental costs of providing water. And, and so customers are paying for the cost to receive the benefit that they, that their water use provides. The other procedural portion of Prop 218 and, and why, why we're here today is that the rates have to be, customers have been notified of the, the rate increase, any rate increase. So that process entails sending out notices of what the new rates will be, giving the customers at least 45 days to review that and have an opportunity to submit written protests. If a majority of customers submit written protests, then the rates that were notified cannot go forward. And then after that 45 day period, the district will need to hold a public hearing. And that's when you can adopt the, the rates if you so choose. Overview of the study is, as Brett said.
Excuse me? I, I think you should clarify that statement about the majority. It's not a majority of those who comment. It's a majority of the water district.
Thank you, Director Russell. Yes, it's the, it's the majority of all customers have to submit a written protest to stop the, the rates from going forward. And, and, and so back to the, the study overview, develop the financial plans, which identify the overall revenue that the rates need to recover. Then we allocate that overall revenue to the different rate customer classes and rate components based on how those, how customer use drives those costs. Throughout this, this process, there's been a lot of great input from the community. The, the four workshops that were held, working with staff input and, and the board has, has provided a lot of great feedback. And just from our perspective, it's been a privilege to work with the district, a lot of very talented people. And, you know, a lot of really insightful feedback as we've gone through this process. So there are some, some challenges which we are aware of and you've, we've, you've heard over the course of this process. But there's the deficit, this deficit that I'm showing here is, is with the identified revenue requirement. This would be with current rates, you'd be $27 million short of the identified need, not necessarily the baseline. So there's a difference between the baseline and the, and the required needs that have been identified. So that, that's the first challenge. Then as Brett talked about, the aging infrastructure, having additional funding for, to invest in capital projects and water supply resiliency, being able to continue to have rates pay for the cost of importing water. In our model, we had an eight and a half percent annual amount over the four-year period. And then inflation and, and just, and at the end of the four years, we want to have the rates leave the district in a position where they can, where you can continue to pursue these, these projects and you're not constrained. So this is a four-year picture of your financial point of your cash flows. The columns represent your total expenses, which are total cash expenses, which are debt service, operating costs and cash from the capital. The green line are the proposed revenues and the, the black line is what your revenues would be. Just with slight increases in demand. And so with the proposed revenues, increasing revenue by 33 million in the first year rights the ship. So your, your revenues are exceeding your expenses. And, and then there's a, you can see the, the difference between the green line and the columns. That's a, the cushion that you'd be building reserves or using for other water supply projects. Zooming out over a 10-year window, this shows your revenues to your expenses, but the, the black lines are your reserve target, which is six months of operating plus your baseline capital expenditures. And then the, the solid black line is, are your current reserves. And so what, what this shows is that really you're just setting yourself on a trend to build back reserves over time and make investments in, in the water system as you're building back those reserves. Just a side note, after the four-year period, we have about 4% revenue increases thereafter. So as Brett talked about, aiming to get to a point where you have continue, continual predictable annual revenue increases. So your current rates, your portable charges for your water charges consists of three components. You have your service charge, capital maintenance fee, your water should management fee. Cause some customers also have the private fireline charge. And then your volumetric rates based on water use are, you have your residential duplex and multifamily residential classes with four tiers, with inclining blocks. So the more you use, the more you pay. And then your commercial institution irrigation customers are based on water allotments. So a percentage of the allotment for each customer and the tiers increase based on up to 85%, I believe is for the first year for your commercial customers of your allotment, 150% and then above that. And then currently raw water has a uniform rate. So they pay the same amount for every unit of water they use. So our, we have a number of rate structure recommendations to make your rates more reflective of the cost of service. The first is to align resident, align residential tiers to reflect current water demands. So that consists of adjusting the tier breakpoints and also moving out, away from having seasonal tiers because the inclining blocks are already reflect seasonality. And so there's not a need to, to shift those as well. Adopting rates tied to drought rates tied to the water shortage contingency plan. So we calculated what, what surcharges would need to be applied to your rates to recover the fixed costs, but reflect that some of the volumetric costs go down when you have lower water use. We're changing fix, we're reducing the amount of fixed fees are as a proportion of customer bills. So that is, one part of that is recovering the watershed management fee as a volume metric rate instead of a fixed charge. Moving the fixed charge to recover costs that are increasing with inflation. So the fixed charge will increase based on our projected inflation, which is, we're assuming 5% for this model. The same with the capital maintenance fee. And then also adjust the meter equivalents for single family and duplex customers to reflect their usage in relation to the smallest meter, rather than look at the maximum flow per, for the meter. And by doing so, you, I think you'll also not need to do the, um, meter adjustment program as well.
Excuse me, Eric, could you just explain that last point a little bit? So moving away from a fixed fee charge that's based exclusively on meter size, but rather calibrating that fixed fee charge so that it's, there's a consumption element. There's, but somehow that's related back to the smallest meter, the five eighths. How does that, what's that relationship?
Correct. So, so currently every meter equivalent is really based on a five eighths equivalency, whether it's the, using the maximum safe capacity of the meters itself. Or what we're proposing is looking at the maximum month usage of the different meter sizes relative to the, the smallest meter maximum month usage.
Yeah, it's, it's still a fixed charge. We're just recommending to make it more precise based on actual usage of those meters. So in looking at a one-inch meter, now we have data that we can apply to it as it compares to the five eighths, which is different. It's a more precise number for us than using kind of the book numbers of the capacity of the meter. So it's really just kind of fine tuning the methodology to make it more precise.
And then, and Ben, just if I understand, then we'll be applying a multiplier for the, the one-inch meters against the baseline of five eighths.
That, that's correct. Similar to what we do now. It's just those factors are modified a bit.
And, and we're proposing that this is done just for the residential customers because residential customers have a much more consistent demand profile and how they use water over, over time. Whereas your, the commercial institutional irrigation class is a pretty heterogeneous usage class. So we feel that the meter ratios based on the meter capacity is still more reasonably, more reasonable to apply to that class. But for the residential customers, you think usage is a better indication of the capacity that those different customers are, are using. So our next recommendation is to update the recycled water rate structure to reflect the new operating agreement. And, and basically remove the, the tiers and treat them more like the raw water customers, where they just have the uniform rate where they pay for what they, they use. And that reflects the, the cost of purchasing that recycled water to provide to those customers. And then we also are recommending.
Eric, Eric, you're talking about the new operating agreement with Los Colinas?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. And yes, and so then the, the next recommendation. And yes, and so then the, the next recommendations are to consult a few consolidations of the customer class. The first one is consolidating the single family residential customers and the duplex customers. They're very, very similar usage profiles and we felt there was a stronger case to treat them as to charge them the same for every increment of water than to charge them differently. Also with the single family irrigation class, we felt their profile fit the the commercial institutional and irrigation class. And there was not a need to continue to treat them differently.
Eric, sorry, another interruption.
No problem.
The single family irrigation class, what, what does that refer to?
There's a, I believe it's about fifty service connections and it's where some single family customers have a separate irrigation meter. So the use is still irrigation, but it happens to be connected to a single family property. And with, with these changes to the rate structures, there, what, what, how it translates into the rates is that there will be some customers whose rates will go up greater than the proportion of the overall revenue increase. And some will have their rates not go up as much as the overall revenue increase. So it's just an adjustment of rates to reflect the cost of service and charge customers more proportionally. So this is, these are the proposed rates. This, these are the bi-monthly service charges. And you'll see that there is the difference between the single family and duplex service charges and how that, their proportion. And then the all, and then the service charges for all of the other classes. So that's reflecting that, that change. And you'll see that the, over the four years, they're increasing at a five percent rate, which is our inflation assumption. For the capital maintenance fee, it is, in the first year, it's set to still recover that baseline capital that was identified. Just recalibrated to reflect those changes and then increasing as well with, with inflation. This shows our, our recommended tier changes. And so for single family and duplex, we're recommending that the tier breakpoints shift down to reflect the lower usage patterns. And also to reflect the incremental costs throughout the usage spectrum. Currently, the rates really only affect the top thirty percent of users. So we want to make sure that customers are paying their proportional costs, which is lower as you use less and require less infrastructure increases throughout that, that spectrum. So now it's, it's more reflective of current, the current bell curve of usage. And then with us, and we're also again recommending that there's not a seasonal shift. As you, you know, the rates already reflect that as you use more in the summer, you'll be using more in that peak usage. And there's not a need to have shifting tiers. The same with the multifamily residential tiers, we're recommending removing the seasonality. Multifamily also has separate, many multifamily connections also have separate irrigation meters. So we feel that the, the tier increments are reasonable and reflect the the smaller baseline household size already. And so we feel that moving to remove the seasonality is, is reflects, reflects the current cost of serving those customers. So these are the, the volumetric rates that capture all of the recommendations that I mentioned. You see the watershed maintenance fee on the top as a per unit of water charge. And then you'll see the different rate, the different tiered rates for each customer class. And those are recovering the, the total revenue requirement over the four years in, in concert with the, the fixed service charges which are recovering operating costs going up with inflation.
Just, just wanted to clarify one question on the change in the elimination of that season, seasonality adjustment. And I, I agree with, you know, moving to a standard, you know, annual fee. And, and I agree that the new tier structure does account for the higher consumption during the summer. But it actually doesn't, it doesn't, in, in the past, we, you know, having a more lenient tier structure in the summer versus the winter months, wouldn't it have had the op? Previously, weren't we doing the opposite? We were actually discounting water in the summer. We weren't. So, so it's not, we're not quite, we're not really, we're removing that summer discount, but, but we're not. You know, it's, it's slightly different from saying that we are achieving the same thing by, by just changing our tier structure.
That's a good clarification. And, and there was a little bit of conflicting, you know, a four tiered structure is implemented to encourage conservation and, and reflect peak use costs being higher than just baseline or below average use. So there was a little bit of a competition between the signal of the tiers and then having the seasonal increase of the tiers in the summer. And it was cost based like the, the previous rates didn't incorporate the cost of providing that peak demand over the course of the year. But we feel that it, moving away from that makes it I think a little bit easier to explain and defend as well as I, I think sends a stronger conservation signal and, and better links the, the cost over the course of the year to the cost of providing the, the water.
Yeah, I, I agree. It is a much simpler way to try to correlate consumption with cost. Just, just one other question, the multifamily residential tier allotments. The, the, the tier cutoffs are at much lower levels than the single family. Does that apply to each unit within them? I see. Okay.
Correct. Every unit, it's multi, the multifamily tiers are multiplied by every unit. And the same for duplex too. They'll get two times the allotments that the single family receives. So to look at an impact to a median bill and we're, for this example, using five CCF as a monthly median. You'll, you'll see that the current, the current bill, you have the, the three components that I mentioned, watershed, capital and service. And makes up about sixty five percent of the bill. It, when the proposed, with the proposed rates, you only have the service charge and the capital maintenance fee. And that makes up about fifty percent of the, the bill. So you have a lower, lower fixed component overall. And then the watershed is now the volumetric component. And so the total bill for the median customer would change, would increase from sixty six, basically sixty seven dollars to eighty one dollars and seventeen cents. And then looking at the changes at different monthly costs at different usage levels. With the, the fixed charges, not, you know, not increasing of the same amount as the volume metric charges. The, the impact increases as customers use more, more water. So a low, a two and a half CCF user will see just a little over a five dollar monthly increase to their bill. Whereas the twenty CCF user will see a larger increase. But, but most of your customers, your median reflects fifty percent. Seventy five percent of your customers are below ten, ten units a month. So it's, there is a conservation oriented change that we're proposing. Finally, drought rates, as I touched on that before, they, they're built to reflect basically your, you have, you have those fixed costs that don't change and then you have some volumetric costs that change. So the drought rates reflect still paying your fixed costs at that lower, lower usage level. And so we oriented these with the stages in the water shortage contingency plan. And as, you know, as those, as the drought becomes more severe, those surcharges become greater to recover those fixed costs. And an example, just applying the stage two surcharges to the surcharge percentage to the drought state to the single family tiers at a stage two drought. You'd see the, those, each tiered rate will increase by twenty two percent. So the drought rates are twenty two percent increase at stage two.
Eric, just on the, the monthly single family water cost impacts, this is for the first year or?
First year.
First year. Okay. So about half of our customers are going to see between a ten to twenty percent. The lower half, the lower fifty percent will see a ten to twenty percent increase in year one. And then there's a escalator every year after that for the four years.
Correct. The largest, the largest increase will be in the, the first year and then yes.
And then five percent after that. Roughly.
High, higher than five percent because it's reflected to capture those different capital cost, capital costs. It's the fixed charges are going up five percent, but the volumetric charges are going up greater than five percent per year. But the largest increase to any rate category is in the first year. So just in summary, we, we evaluated, we took into consideration the policy objectives, customer demands and system costs in our evaluation of the rate proposed rates. Include the adjustments to, to better reflect costs of providing service to customers. And they provide the district more flexibility with, to invest in the in the infrastructure and water supply projects that the district has. We also are recommending temporary drought rates so that if another drought occurs, there'll be a mechanism to prevent the district from having to use as much of its reserve going forward. And the, the recommended four year rate increases will leave the district in a position where they can, where you can choose to continue water supply enhancement and have more even increases going forward.
Thank you, Eric. And so in the last two slides here, before we wrap up, I just did want to again point the board and, and any public that are watching towards additional resources. I know that there was a lot covered today with the website you see here on the screen, rainwater.org backslash. I should say forward slash twenty twenty three rate setting is, is full of a lot of good information, understanding your current bill, tracking all the presentations we've given over the last three or four months. And we have a list of FAQs there that we continue to build out as we get more questions. We will, we will post the actual cost of service study to that when it's finalized. And there'll be other information there as well. So we'll direct you to there for any additional information in the meantime. And then just to kind of recap what, what Eric had said, we've finished our cost of service analysis. The revenue requirement does include funding for the top district priorities as discussed in depth here today and over the last few weeks. The structural changes do include reduced fixed fees for most customers, particularly those of smaller sized meters. Lower, single family residential tier breaks. And then customer, customer rate impacts will be reflected more fully in the proposition two eighteen notices that come out next month. And we will come back in May of two thousand twenty three for a public hearing to, to finalize this. So with that, that concludes our presentation and we're happy to take any questions.
Great. Board questions?
Well, thank you for the presentation and, and the hard work, everybody. The whole team and Brett, your, your leadership and thought process and clear presentation, super appreciated. And same with our, our consultants. I, I, having gone through this with all of us and with you all repeatedly am, am fully supportive of the tier structure. I think it's thoughtful. I think it's fair. It encourages conservation and, and demand management and, and and, and the drought pricing is also thoughtful so that we won't get caught like we did the last two years. And really, to be clear for our customers, what we are, what we are asking them is to follow the climate. Climate change is the driver here and as drought kicks in, use less water and your bills won't go up as much. And, and that's the clear message. And I, and I think that this rate structure helps clarify our goals and intentions. And, 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 and then rooting that with, I think, a very thoughtful approach to caring for the neediest customers with the lowest income and one of the most generous policies in our region is a powerful message that, 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 that we're looking out for everybody as best as we possibly can. I also think it's important that our community knows, at least from my personal experience, having been on over thirty boards. This is an extraordinarily frugal organization. This is not a wasteful group. This is not a luxurious place where money's flowing everywhere. This is a scrappy, hands-on, fix the pipes as best as we possibly can. We're behind. These folks are working day and night and overtime to service our community. And, and I think this board is motivated to, to continue to be thoughtful and not wasteful. And that these rate increases are not frivolous, but, but we're being, we're being careful. And, and supportive of the staff and their, and their desire to do so as well. So I'm supportive of all of that. The, the one part that I'm not a hundred percent supportive of is the specific line item details of some of the expenses that we had up there. I'm supportive on the high level. But I, I would not say it's a carte blanche to go spend ten point nine million dollars on a roadmap where we haven't really seen that yet. And so that's not what you're asking. So all, all of those details I think are directional. I'm good with that. And, and I think that the proposal you're sending out is, is quite fair and thoughtful. So I'm appreciative.
Well, Brett and the team, Eric, thank you guys very much for your work and for everyone that went into it. It's, it shows in the presentation again and again. So it helps me a lot. I appreciate it. And I think it also aligns with a lot of the direction that I think this board's coming from, you know, on the right side, right off the bat is to reward those who are conserving or those who can't afford a higher bill. And I think for the first time in a long time, we have a way to reward the folks that are, that are heeding the message, that are doing the right thing. And actually saying, I want to support the district and our water and conserve. I mean, looking at the rates, rate hikes for those customer groups, we're looking at a fairly substantial, I would say around fifty percenters of folks or so that are between a five and fifteen dollar increase per month, which is far less than a dollar a day. So I'm, I'm very happy to see that, especially with what we're going to be getting out of it. And then also the, the portion of the fixed fees that have been hanging out too. So on the other side of the house, on the actual budget piece, for me, I think it's important that the public knows that it's really hard to grasp what we're going for with this presentation and that we are really making a really big swipe and a big stride. At taking care of a lot of the problems that have existed for a while and not continuing to kick the can down the road. Showing the workforce that we value them. We're going to be investing in a training program for them. Taking with the infrastructure and then I think finally, which is near and dear to my heart, one, the supply piece. Actually making the moves and making efforts and not just continuing to analyze and actually moving forward on that part. And then also addressing the fire risk we see in the watershed by reinvesting in those funds. So I'm, I'm very happy. I think it aligns with our direction and I look forward to seeing staff's recommendations to get the details you're looking for. And so we can put a final stamp of approval on this. So thank you.
I have a couple of comments, Monty.
Go ahead, Larry.
Well, Matt, I don't think the can was ever kicked down the road, but that's a conversation for a different day. Could you go back to the curve that had the black and green line on it? I was trying to look it up, but I can't, can't seem to quite get my hands on it, what slide it is.
Yeah, give you a minute, I'll get there.
It's the projected income versus the fixed in, fixed costs.
Slide thirty one.
Yeah, that's it. What debt coverage ratio is plowed into this?
I believe you stay above two, I think the lowest it gets is two point three, I believe.
And what's the basis of that?
Looking at your, the Looking at your the revenue, just the revenues, less expenses.
No, I understand how you calculate it. I'm asking you, why would you shoot for 2.3 if 1.25 is required? I'm not arguing with you. It's a good goal. I like it, but.
So what I would say, Director Russell, on this one is that, yeah, I think a piece of the strategy here is to build reserves, right? And so I think debt coverage ratio is purely for revenue and expenses. And so if you're building reserves, you're mathematically going to be above that kind of 1.25 or 1.5 target. So largely what pulls us above that into the the twos and close to three is just our reserve replenishment as well as the water supply reserve for future projects.
I would also add the the capital investment is increasing the cash funded, the cash funded capital investment. And that also is not part of the, doesn't count against the debt coverage ratio, and that's increasing as well.
And the other thing going along with Jed, equity and affordability are really critical here. We need to be very careful that we're thinking about the entire community when we're looking at these kind of rate increases.
I think, I think Larry's comment that that led us to talk about reserves brought up something. I just, just one clarification, Brett, when we're talking about those reserves, we've actually now set up a reserve fund to support capital improve or new new supply improvements. So we've slightly, we've structured our reserves slightly differently going forward. And and I just want to reflect on how that's a result of a lot of discussion that's been going on to get to this point. Obviously, there's all the work that staff has done or our consultants. But I just also amongst the board, you know, we've had it, you know, by no means is this one meeting where we're talking it through all of these details. It's been many meetings. We've made a lot of decisions. I think it's been really productive and I think it is a very good illustration of what we can accomplish together going forward. And it makes me feel really optimistic to have come up with a product that I think works really well through this process.
I won't, there's a great comments and I agree with every board member comment made so far. And I think it's just really important for the public to understand that there are many strategies being implemented with what we are proposing here. And I think it really reflects a lot of fantastic thought on the part of staff, on the part of the consultants and the board in a fairly unified sense of we need to make some changes, not just with adjusting for the cost of inflation. That would be so simple in many ways. We are really addressing a number of different challenges that are facing the resiliency of our district to be able to meet our core mission of providing safe and reliable and affordable water supplies to our community. And so the fact that we are addressing inflation is of course at at the baseline, but building our reserves back so that we are in a position to weather whatever comes next. Maybe it will be a drought, maybe it will be a wildfire, maybe it'll be a flood. We don't really know, but if we don't have reserves to be able to to deal with the uncertainty that is definitely part of the backdrop of our operating a water district, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be protecting our customers. The fact that we are addressing a backlog of infrastructure maintenance. We do have a substantial amount of infrastructure that needs to be repaired, replaced, upgraded. It is both hard infrastructure of pipes that are cast iron pipes that are that are, you know, that are decades old past their service life. Or it's our our computer systems that are no longer up to date. And we all have dealt with having our software become obsolete on our computers and we are facing that too. There's a lot of investment in our district that we need to do. And and honestly, we are building a plan that will get us there over time. We have to meter it out because it would be too much to take on at once. But we have a plan to get there in time and and to make sure that generationally, we're addressing that. That our kids who will inherit the system we're building and we're maintaining will get a system that is in good shape. The fact that we are recognizing that our watershed provides an incredible resource to us in many different ways at the core. It's water supply, but it is also a recreational resource. It is also an ecological resource of world renowned. And it is also something that just brings an intangible benefit to our community that when we look out the door or as we walk down the street or we drive to school or to work or whatever it is, we get to look at Mount Tam. And that has an immeasurable benefit. And part of what we're addressing here is making sure that that resource is also protected into the future. And we are going to increase our water supplies because we know that we are facing a climate uncertain future where we know that it'll be harder to get the same amount of water out of the same amount of rainfall with increasing evaporate transpiration, higher intensity storms, longer dry periods. This makes our job harder with just the water that we've got. And so we are going, we are increasing our water supplies and we're making investments to generate new water supply. And then in the period of this budget. And to do this in a way where we are incentivizing conservation, I think that is a message that we've heard from the community. And I'm really excited that we're doing that here. And as Jed pointed out, I think really importantly is that we are, we have a rate structure that is also protective of our lowest income community members. And I think that is just can't be overstated is how important that is. So there's a lot in here. I really appreciate all the work that everybody has done on this, the very thoughtful questions and we continue to have. And we're, we're, I'm supportive of what we're doing here and moving forward. Recognizing that we will continue to be engaged and have oversight and and work with the staff and the consultants to refine the things that I think we would like to have a better understanding of, but we can see the logic and the great work that's been put into this. So thank you. Any other board comments? Larry? Okay.
Not right now.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And with that, I think we are.
Public comment.
Oh, sorry. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. We now have time for a public comment.
Yes, we have several. The first three speakers are Mr. Phil Soder, then if you go ahead, sir. Then Ed Jameson and Mimi Willard.
Sorry, Phil.
Oh, no problem. I'm fresh from Woodacre where the power is out. So I apologize for not being very well prepared, but the presentation is getting better and better. And once again, it really shows that rates and water supply and conservation are all just joined at the hip. They're really related. One thing I noticed is that conservation, along with Sonoma Water Supply, are two of the water supply options where the costs are mostly variable and not fixed as they are in the other water supply options. And I think that's something to bear in mind when we look at water supply. We'd like to, if we can, get away from so much fixed cost and a little bit more toward variable if we can get a chance to do that. The second thing is, I would really like to see under this new rate structure, what percentage of water is sold in each of the tiers? I know, working with the numbers that Carrie gave me, I found that we were selling like 1 and 1/2% of our water in tier four. I'd like to, you know, I ran through a model where where we put 5% in tier four and 10% in tier three. And and I think we have half the people still in tier one and we still added $20 million a year. So I'd like to see how that's trending, if there's still an opportunity to get more water sold at the higher tiers. Let's see. Oh, the other thing where where there, where there's something that still is kind of striking is that the our use of outdoor water, 40% of of residential water use is outdoors, but only 2% of our supply comes from non potable water and non potable water would be perfect for that 40%. So I think that's out of balance. And I I'd like to see the district at some point look at potable water supply and delivery as a separate business opportunity and a chance to make some money. I don't think non potable water has to be cheaper necessarily than potable water. Let's see. There's one other thing. Oh, yeah, I still believe that the watershed management fee, it was, it was never enough, you know, five or six years ago. And I I would like to see an opportunity for that to be increased with the rate structure. One of the beautiful, the beauty shots on a on a previous presentation was a great picture of the reservoir, but right in front was a broom plant. And and I think we still have too much invasive broom on the watershed. I think that'll do me for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jameson, please.
Yes, hi. I have three things I'd like to comment on. On the need for increasing funding for capital improvements, I'm confused about the so-called scaled up backlog reduction funding of 30 million. That's an average of only about seven and a half million annually. Is that on top of the present level of only 20 million, which is well below our recent pre drought spending of about 25 million annually? I believe the recent presentations have suggested a need for something like 37 to 40 million annually for capital improvements. So my question is, what is the proposed annual average total spending for actual capital improvements? Not including spending on things like studies for possible supply enhancements. On another issue, I believe the two seasonal tier structures should be continued. People need to use more water in the summer. The reality is that we use about twice as much in peak summer months as in the generally low February lows. And lastly, as for the single family tier rates for actual water usage, the largest rate increase is 62% for tier one, but only 12% for tier four. This appears to be exactly upside down if we're trying to encourage conservation. Thanks for your thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Jameson. Ms. Mimi Willard.
Yes, can you hear me okay? Because I've been told sometimes it's hard for you to hear me at this.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, great. So I I'd like to start by saying that I'm very, I thought it was excellent presentation. I thought that you provided good disclosure about why there is a big rate increase coming over this four year cycle and what it's needed for. I'm very pleased to see that the rate proposal will have the fixed fee percentage of the typical customers bill falling over this period. And that the new way of charging the fixed fee will be based on demonstrated local water usage relationships between and among the meter sizes. So I think this is more fair and rewards conservation. But I would like to encourage some additional disclosure so that your rate payers are better prepared for what's in store for them. First of all, I think it would be imperative to have a slide that shows the total revenue per year for the district under this new rate structure that's coming from customers so that people can see in effect what's the compounded impact of the additional revenue. And, you know, where it's, where it's coming from and maybe where it's going to. Secondly, I think it would be important to show the impact on the median, median customer or maybe the median customer in each meter size by year so that they can see what happens over for a typical person over four years. And then I think it's also really important on slides 40 and 41 that those be presented as bi-monthly, that's presented as monthly. And people could get really confused by what their bill is going to look like. And all the other slides here are done on a bi-monthly basis, and that's what people are accustomed to. Finally, I think that the district is working on something that I think would be fabulous. I don't know if it's going to be done in time, which will be allow the customer to model his or her bill as they receive this new Prop 218. And what I think should be included in that is that the customer puts in three, three or four things and they they up pops what their bill is going to look like in terms of dollars by monthly. The size of their meter, how much water they expect that they use in the average cycle, any discounts that are available to them, which should be in a drop down menu and to do it by year. Thank you.
Thank you. The next two speakers, Mr. Eric Groves and then Roger Roberts. Go ahead, Mr. Groves.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just wanted to comment, I've been listening to the various presentations over time. It looks to me like there's a continued perception, there's a substantial backlog of expenditures that have not been made in previous years. And that while this budget is an attempt to recover some of that, it's not really very ambitious. So while the first bite may be substantial, the years following thereafter are actually relatively small. And if you're expecting to recover the loss that have not been dealt with in the past, you're going to have to increase that substantially. So I would advocate you be more ambitious and get your bills up higher. Bye.
Thanks, Mr. Groves. Next speaker, Mr. Roger Roberts.
Good afternoon. I didn't hear the whole presentation because I've been dealing with storm issues today at my house. And so I missed the first.
Sorry, Mr. Roberts. Go ahead, sir. Can you please repeat that?
I thought I was already unmuted.
You are. Go ahead. I couldn't hear you. Go ahead.
Were, did anybody hear what I said?
Yes, that you couldn't, you missed a good chunk or the first part of the presentation because you had some storm damage.
Right. Well, I I have a couple of questions and I don't know whether you can answer them or not. Did you consider five tiers rather than four? By having five tiers, you can emphasize in a much greater and clearer fashion, conservation measures and and reduce usage. And I thought maybe that would be a useful alternative to consider before you put it into final form. And I'm also confused as to what this proposed rate structure will provide in the ability to meet capital replacement costs and the ability to bond, which is going to be a substance. I I don't think this is all pay go. I think portion of this is going to be funded with bonding. And it's not clear to me how much bonding you're going to be able to achieve with this structure and whether that is really going to be sufficient to get you well down the road on what needs to be done. And so I would like to have a better understanding of that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Can I ask a quick question? People are asking some pretty detailed questions about about the analysis. And I know that we might not have the time or be prepared on the spot here to respond to them. But I'm wondering if we can have like some sort of, I don't want to say frequently asked question because they're not frequent, but they are asked questions. And is there a way that we could put on our website or something, a response to some of these questions? Because they're good ones. And I think that we have a good answer, at least to some of the ones that I understand. But I want to be responsive to the questions that are being asked.
Yeah, we absolutely can do that. And I would invite the board members, if there's a question from the public that you're particularly interested tonight to hear the response to, for you to ask staff is a good way to do it so we don't jump ahead of that process. But we would if if there was, but we will capture them and ensure they're covered. And some may not be now in our FAQs that we, I believe we have it on the website now or.
Yeah, we have a growing list of FAQs on the website. It's Marinwater.org/2023ratesetting. And we are documenting these questions and some of them will get addressed where appropriate in the FAQs. Some might be in future meetings.
Thank you.
Okay.
I was just going to add about, I know the question or a comment came up about the rate calculator and being able to show customer impacts. And that is in development right now and will be published to the website upon the Prop 218 notice going out to customers.
We have two more speakers, 1402, then Mr. Larry Minnikes. Go ahead, 1402.
Uh, James Holmes, Larkspur. The analysis, the staff analysis was persuasive, but nevertheless, the bottom line increase proposed between 10 and 20% is staggering. And then I actually heard a reference to 63%. I think we need to know in the 218 materials or otherwise, which customer classes are more likely to get 10 versus 20% and and how people are likely to fall along that continuum. It is nevertheless very, very, a very, very high increase, especially when you add in the inflation escalator. Additionally, I think that the proposal, proposed increase is going to be less palatable because it is unaccompanied by. because it is unaccompanied by any specific plans for water supply. On the one hand, I noticed that board members were understandably hesitant to be botched in or committed to any particular budget increments at this point. But I can't help but think that many rate payers confronted with a 10 to 20% or greater increase will think that the board has put the rate increase cart before the supply increase horse. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Larry Minnikes, please.
Yes, good evening. Unfortunately, I was only able to catch part of the presentation. We'll go back and I'll watch it in its entirety. But what I did hear from the board, I fully support and appreciate that we're taking a forward looking view, looking into the future, looking to future generations and understanding our responsibility to maintain and upgrade our system. And in doing so, we are working on behalf of the rate, rate payer's best interests. To Roger Roberts' suggestion, I don't know the, the process well enough if we can do this. But if a fifth tier is possible, I would suggest you add an, an L tier and maintain the one, two, three and four tiers. That way it's clearly delineated. Those people that are truly water savers have their own tier. And with that, I'll thank you and good evening.
Thank you. There are no further speakers.
Okay. Thank you again to Brett and to the consultants. You've done a lot of work to get us here and it's really, really important work. Really appreciate it. And to the staff who obviously are also in the background supporting all this work. Do you have any more?
Well, I think Ben, you were looking for direction from the board. If any of these ideas you would like us to push.
Yeah, so this is brought as an informational item with the understanding that staff wants to hear if there's any concerns and how we would address them in terms of proceeding with the 218 mailer with the understanding that between now and the rate hearing, certainly we're going to be bringing back the more detailed information along with the budget itself, which will accompany the rate adoption. So we'll be bringing back the budget and going through that in detail, as well as some of the breakouts that you've asked for tonight.
And specifically, I think some of the people called in and made comments had, had some ideas and I'd like to support some of them. And one actually Larry Russell also mentioned, I think it's important for us to realize a key item in here that we brushed over fairly quickly is that this board is approving a two and a half million dollar per year reserve, a new reserve that will be for water supply capital investments in the future. And so what we're doing is we're actually building our reserves so that our, our debt to, our debt ratio will, will make it such that we can make some fairly significant investments in the future. We're not ready yet to say exactly which one. But it would be good to show the public what our capacity will be, how much we can invest. And I think it's the tune of north of $200 million that we should have the ability to do it in, 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 I think it was like four to six years. I'm not sure exactly, but let's get, let's get that data out there so that they can know that we are planning for the future. We're building the financial structure for it. And, and now we're going to get into the real details. I think Jacob set us up to go now make some decisions and that's going to be coming up pretty soon. So that would be really helpful to have. Thank you.
Other board additional comments?
I think just one clarifying point here. Once, or I guess once staff moves forward, the 218 mailer, are we bound to anything then because of them?
No, the actual decision will be at the rate hearing where we'll bring this information and more. And that will be the formal decision-making for the board, which follows the 218 and protests. And you'll be informed by that as well.
So with that, we wouldn't be able to, we would be still able to alter the rate part of the process.
Right. We wouldn't be able, we could go, essentially we're setting the ceiling. It's difficult at a rate hearing to make major changes to the rates because you have the COSA and that sort of stuff. But we are setting the ceiling of the rates. There has been times where that's been reduced at rate hearings in the district. So it's not locked in. Best practice is again, difficult on the fly at a rate hearing to make changes. But it is, we've done it in the past.
And just support Adrian for what you're putting forward in terms of helping customers really understand in detail the impact on them. And I thought Brett, actually your presentation did it really well. There's several slides to give people very, very clear impacts and how much water they're going to use, what their pipes look like and et cetera. So I think you've done a lot of that work. Let's make sure it's clear on the website. That was repeated by a bunch of folks and I'm glad to hear that you're on it already. So sooner the better. Sounds like they're looking for it.
Yeah, I want to echo that. I think that there are, again, there are a number of different strategies that are embedded in what we have presented tonight that might be better pulled out in a little bit more specific. The, the, the infrastructure reserve is one that I think folks would, might not understand just seeing the number, what it actually really means and why it's an incredibly wise strategy for us because it builds our capacity to be able to do the kind of projects that we haven't clearly identified yet. And we wouldn't, we're not ready to yet, but we will in a very near term. And when we do, we will have the reserves and the ability to, to go after those projects in a much better way. So things that we have that are within our rate structure that I think are some strategies. Again, Adrian, you're, you're wonderful and talented ability to listen to the comments. And maybe we can spend some time working on that in our communications committee to make sure that we really have a good questions section that can help people understand what we're doing.
And to, and to build on that, like, let's be overtly clear and promote our grant policy and our, and our tremendous effort to help low income folks. Let's advertise it. Let's put it on top of our webpage and let's make it really clear that it, that if you're having problems affording it, we have, we have, we have a way around it. And, and so all the more this is not a business. We're looking out for our community, especially those with the biggest needs.
Okay. Any other board comment? Okay. Then with that, we will be adjourning to a closed session.
We're actually going to adjourn this special meeting.
We're going to.
And start a new special meeting because we have a separate agenda. So we can take a break maybe for a few minutes and then we'll, we'll be on the same Zoom link. But we'll just be back at maybe just a little after seven. So people can take a quick break.
Can we just say 7:05?
Seven oh five is good. Seven oh five, let's say. Thank you.
Molly, Molly, I was sent.